...I solemnly pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to your honor, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Okay, very good. First thing up, we need a presentation. So a proclamation, little constitution week, uh, to be received by, let me tell you the name.
Virginia.
Virginia, yeah. Okay, and she's here representing the daughters of the revolution. Alright, okay, come on up. Go over the table there.
Step, big step forward so you don't let you show him.
You're going to terrorize me with your hair. Okay, alright, so whereas September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, fifty-five delegates of the Constitutional Convention was built up at Independence Hall, signed the United States Constitution. And whereas, September seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, marks the two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth anniversary of the draft of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it's the privilege, honor, and duty of American people to accord official recognition to this magnificent document. And whereas, public law nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as constitution week. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Marky Morgus, Mayor of the town of Lakewood Village in the town, in the state of Texas, hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as constitution week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that frankers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by diligently protecting, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, reflecting on the privileges of being an American, and all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Witness thereof, I've set my hand and sealed the town on this the eighth day of September, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you.
Okay. It's starting the football season, that's how we celebrate the Constitution.
That's right.
You don't have to stay and discuss our tax rate unless you want to. Since you live in Little Elm, you can, you're free to say what you like.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, thank you. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing scheduled on the proposed property tax rate of thirty cents for opt-in by Assistant Climate, Councilman made on the tax rate, we'll do it without amendment, anyone read it? So, the proposed tax rate is the same as it was last year. If you look up here, nineteen seventy-seven, twenty-seventeen, it's forty years, same twenty-five cents for the city, five cents for temporarily for the debt, that's our thirty cents. So, it's the same as it's always been. So, um, anybody have any comments? Anybody sign up for public hearing? Does anybody want to say anything about the tax rate?
Thank you for keeping it down.
These are going okay?
So, uh, so with the tax rate, you know, we're, we're, the, uh, when we get to it, there is a, um, there's a cover sheet which discusses the tax rate, and there are two things on the sheet. One is the effective rate, the other is the rollback rate. The effective rate is what would the tax rate be if we wanted to generate exactly the same amount of money? Exactly identically the same amount of money as last year? Okay, that's twenty-nine point two cents. That's to generate absolutely the same dollar. The rollback rate is what we could charge in order to pay the debt and run the city with the same amount of money. The rollback rate is forty-six cents. So if we were another city, forty-six cents is where the tax rate should be. Well, why is it only thirty? Because sixteen cents is coming out of the city to pay for those bonds. We only charged a nickel. So we had twenty-five cents for the city and a nickel for that. Well, the actual roads are like, you know, twenty cents. So of that twenty-five cents, sixteen cents is what we used to use to run the city, sixteen to twenty-five, now goes to pay off the debts. We're running the city on only nine cents. That's what we're running the city on. It's hard. What we gotta do? Let's try it. It's hard. You can always raise the taxes later if somebody wanted to. We're not doing it. We're never gonna raise the tax laws on here. That's what I.
Well, Marky's.
We're just gonna do the best we can.
Is, is the sales tax helping you?
It's great. You know, I've been putting in the letters time and time again, right? Lakewood Village, I did it today with DirecTV.
Yes.
I was on the phone with DirecTV today. Why do you have me as late as, as little now? Why do you do that? And I haven't changed it today. My billing is Lakewood Village, for some reason my camp. So, that sales tax is going from basically, you know, five thousand dollars up to sixty thousand dollars. That helps a lot, that's a third of our bond payment, okay? So it's these little things that help out a lot. And one or two houses each year helps, you know? We got four houses this year. Four houses is great, you know, four houses is two percent, we got two hundred houses, that's another. So you know, we're, we're, the worst of it was last year. It was brutal last year. Because it was the first year we had to pay the whole thing out of our, our bucket. Before the roads weren't done in fourteen, they were still being worked on, we still had money. We hadn't paid it all yet. Two thousand and fifteen was the first year we paid everything. This last year, a little bit better. Next year, even better. You know, we're climbing out. Things are getting better, so. So the tax rate, thirty cents, same as before. Anybody else have anything?
I wanted to make sure everybody understands the sales tax implications on our address. Because that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, you have to be Lakewood Village.
You'd have to force it.
That's it, we have to.
Your address needs to say that.
Seven five oh six A is Oak Point, Pat Berry, Little Elm, at Lakewood Village. So, you know, you, you gotta do it. I mean, you gotta do it, it's really great, it's really helping out a lot.
The bad thing is when it started out, like, well, we moved out here to the post office said, you're seven six five High Ridge, Little Elm, Texas. And, uh, so if, if you have other bills that are, that, that say Little Elm, Texas, please send them a change of address.
Because I know building your house is Little Elm.
No, ours is Little Elm.
It says Little Elm on it, but it's not in Little Elm, and it's, we tried D-CAD to get it to change it. And D-CAD is really tough to change in Athens.
Move to Hillside Drive. Hillside repeats in Little Elm and in Oak Point.
Oh, there you go.
And, you know, whenever, and I've been forcing people for twenty years to put Lakewood Village on it because, uh, Hill, because Hillside repeats.
So there you can kind of see, putting up there, you know, our property tax, you can see, you know, we're, we're the smallest thing on board. And you can kind of see where that, the brown line is what we did relative, um, you know, to the past. See, the brown line is what the old one was, that's the old city, back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, it was brown. City was property tax and building permits, pretty much. The blue is, you can see what's happened, the building fees went away. We don't get eleven houses a year. Paul, you used to budget for what, eleven? When you were, like, you budgeted for eleven houses a year. It was good money. But you know, we, we, we crashed on the housing down here. We're down to like two houses, two or three. Not eleven. But you see those blue bars there really help us out. Sales tax went from nothing up to, you know, quite a bit. So, anyway.
Eleven percent for the total budget.
Yeah. So I mean, it's really doing well. And like I say, now things are going up. We're getting a few more houses, we'll be a little bit more, more houses need more franchise fees, more money from ProServe, more sales tax when we get a few more houses, and a little bit more water and sewer. The more houses we get, we're creeping up, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. And like I say, the bond payments creep up a little bit, but not by law. We're just able to afford a little bit better, you know? First year you buy that new house, you might not be going to Disney World for vacation that year. Maybe a year later, you're going to Brownsville. You get a little bit vacation, it's gonna take a couple of years to get you to back to Disney World. We're in Brownsville now, we're heading back to Disney World maybe next year. Okay, that's kind of what I think. Alright, if anybody has anything, Danny have anything, Ed?
We're still in the public hearing, aren't we?
Yeah. Anybody? Okay. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing on the tax rate?
I have a motion.
Second.
A second, always in favor? Okay. Alright, next up, item on the agenda, we have lots of public hearings tonight. Public hearing is scheduled to provide opportunity for citizen comment on proposed nuisance ordinance. So stick to the question of bulk trash, we pick up earlier than ten days prior to bulk trash collection. So, um, what this public hearing is that, Clint and I talked about this, uh, a couple, last year, maybe, maybe a year before. Um, you know, I think Clint had heard of an idea, and that was, before we pass an ordinance that has a penalty, we're gonna talk about it once, and then we're gonna have a public hearing to let everybody say what they think. Somebody says, I think that's a good idea, bad idea, or something, give you a chance, before we pass it or consider it, give you a chance to say, I think that's a little harsh, or I think that's a great idea, or whatever, but give you a chance. And then, uh, because there is a penalty, it's an enforceable thing, and we're gonna be enforcing it against citizens. So, it makes sense for the citizens to give us some feedback on whether you're for or against that. So that's kind of what this public hearing is. Does everybody know what we're gonna do? Does everybody understand what? People are putting bulk trash out early, like a month before, you know, if you put a washing heat out there today, there's nothing we can do about it, even though bulk trash ends until November. Because technically, there's no rule against when you can put your bulk trash out. Well, we're running your prop because certain people, it's a prop. So, the ordinance is proposing that you can put your bulk trash out two weekends before, so ten days. So if you're trimming or whatever, you don't have to do it the medium to the weekend before, it's great if you do, but you got two weekends to get your stuff out there. Anything before that, you're gonna, you're blocking the road, you're blocking the road, you're gonna get a letter from us. I want you to bring it back in. Questions, comments?
Yes, a question. What if you have a windstorm like we've had recently? And it's one day after the bulk trash pickup, are we supposed to just leave trees in the yard?
I mean, you know, like, we had the big storm that went through, we had a special.
Yes.
Pickup by ally, because there was a lot of downed trees. That was a, you know, a unique situation that they, they helped us out on. So, my guess is we would handle a unique situations that way.
Is it gonna be written that way? With the, you know, don't want an intensity of success, outstanding circumstances like a storm or something?
Yeah, because we, we're the ones that enforce it, so.
Yeah, it's a scarred number of the set of washing machine out there.
No, that's kind of like, we can, we can put it wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, the idea is that we just don't, everybody understands the problem. The problem is, we, it's an issue, and legally, there's nothing we can do about it. Because nowhere does it say legitimately, show me. Well, we could rely on being a general nuisance, you know, it's unsightly or something, but even our attorneys have said, that's kind of flimsy, you know, how do you, how do you codify, you know, something that's unsightly, you know?
So with the being offset, let's say there, if we talk about the appliances, if some people puts a freezer or something like that on there, or just old furniture, he doesn't put it up on the street, off our back of the street, would he be allowed to put it on his lawn?
Why not?
Well, I mean, that's part of the restriction, isn't it?
Well, you can't, well, bulk trash, we're talking about bulk trash.
I am, that's what I'm talking about, if he's got, uh, an old freezer, refrigerator, or something like that, instead of putting that on the road, he says, well, I'll just keep it in my driveway, or I'll keep it in back of the.
Then he'll get, he'll get a call from us.
Okay, so, I mean, is there gonna be restriction as to where something is gonna be placed or not?
That's, that's probably something we'd have to look at, right? Some, some sort of definition of, of scared from street view or something.
I mean, the first thing we do is if you put in our ride, I mean, everybody puts some bulk trash up in our ride, we put it up next to the street. That's the area that we do not want to get obstructed, we want to minimize the amount of issues.
I know homes that've got a lot of trash, and you can see it from the street, and it's been there for two years.
If it's in your yard, that's a whole nother level of, that's not what this is. This is strictly about every other month, piling your stuff up out of the street. So that, that's what we're looking at here. Everybody think ten days, two weekends is good enough? That give you enough time? Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Are you good?
So if it comes to bulk trash, when it comes to the street?
Yeah, because there you go. If it's in your yard, you got to pile it to bring your yard, that's a different thing, that's a nuisance ordinance, that's a general nuisance. Issues are people hauling it up to the street. I mean, people are, are doing their jobs, it's bulk.
No, that's good feedback, right? I can define it, so it's.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Alright. Second, okay? Motion second, always in favor of the public hearing? Alright, next up, uh, third public hearing, three is the charm. Alright, public hearing is scheduled to provide the opportunity for citizen comment on proposed water and wastewater impact fees. So we have a, the CIC, the improvements advisory committee is working on impact fees. They will have a public hearing on the twenty-second. It's a lot of statutory, this day, that day, so many days, this day, publication, there's about twenty hoops you gotta jump through. Yeah, this is not one of them, this is just that because we're doing impact fees, and they don't charge us for public hearings, we tend to have lots of public hearings here. That way, in case anybody does want to have any questions about the impact fees, you can ask it now. But there's a separate impact fee advisory committee which is meeting, their next meeting is, who, on, four? Twelve, next meeting is on the twelfth.
Everybody understands what an impact fee is?
No, that's a private hearing.
Well, since we're not professionals, you know, and we don't know so much about water work, or the sewer works, or things like that, we have to follow the professionals to see what, uh, what impact, uh, putting in a sewer in a certain place for new homes and things like that will cause on the city. And, uh, so we ask engineers to tell us, are we doing the right thing? Are we making the connections in the right place? And to share those fees, we ask for new development, uh, the builders will actually pay per lot so much as, as an impact fee.
Same thing with the old rate.
Yeah. We're allowed to pay fifty percent in.
We don't have an impact fee today.
No.
We're tapped.
No, they're different. Tap fees, usually tapping the current infrastructure, impact fees, you're, you're offsetting the cost of lane and the new project, so that you can tap it and picture.
The floor is there?
The impact fees.
Oh, you know, we buy recharge that.
No, 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 big impact fees will only apply to new development, they won't apply to any of the homes or any of the current infrastructure that's involved.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is the target for the impact fees gonna be to cover essentially whatever additional infrastructure has to be added, is that the goal right now, for the?
Right now, if somebody were, if landowners were to develop tomorrow.
Right.
They're not required to pay anything.
Right.
We're required to give them service, they're inside the city.
Yeah.
So, if they walked in and said, here's our building plans, we're ready to lock and roll, they pay nothing. Now, we could fit them in, but it's, we're the provider, so if we do the math and say, we need to know the well, we're on the hook for the well. Impact fees allows to collect some of that. It's, it's a very complicated formula, that's why engineers.
So you have to have so many studies and that in order to justify the cost?
So you know, like, part of what Gary and his, they're looking at equipment lists, plans, because you have to scope, you can't charge them for six wells.
Right.
You know, so that's part of all this regulatory hoop jumping. It's got, I can do the math, so can Clint, we can do it, but we have to have a stamped licensed engineer. You gotta, you know, literally, everybody has to follow every step, sequencing, all that stuff, to make it legal. Because you're charging the developer money. This is taxes. Taxes is on the developer's side, not on the city's side. City wants to charge developer money, you better jump through all the hoops right way, otherwise you lose. So, it's, it's getting some money, and then, you know, part of what we're trying to do is working out how we're gonna get the rest of the money.
So that essentially helps offset the costs of the current residents aren't fully funded, that's what it's curious.
The land plan is putting in all piping and the groves and.
Uh, uh, yeah, they have to fill their own stuff.
Connecting to existing facilities.
They have to do their own, but the problem like with land plan is, there's a lot of woods to the west of land plan. You know, it's like, if you don't put the pipe in in front of your own house to suit your own house, you gotta cover the houses up the street. So there, there's a lot of oversizing, there's lift stations that they don't need, but the guys upstream will need it. What goes on their property, that's the way the, the dirt falls, is, you know, where it goes is gravel. So, there's a lot of, it's fairness, right? It's just fairness. If, if, if I made you put in a pipe twice the size so your neighbor's stuff could go past your house, fair is fair, you shouldn't have to pay for upsizing it, that's not fair. So a lot of what we're doing, a lot of the code, a lot of calculus, a lot of engineering, is making sure that developers only get hit with a fair amount. And part of what council will decide in October is what's a fair amount? The engineers, the impact committee will make a recommendation, and the city council members will decide how much amount we want to actually charge, what's fair.
The nice byproduct of the whole process too, is you know, based on the assumption you make of how many houses could potentially be out there, how, how much construction you have to put in in the future day. So now, also for planning purposes, to manage the costs, the trigger criteria for when do we tick over and have to go building a sewer plant, or like, mark, right, can't drill a half a well, when do you finally tick over and have to go drill a half a well?
I mean, I should have posted on the wall, but for the first time ever, in the town's history, we have the entire town water and sewer knocked out. Where the new stuff goes, how to service the rest of the city. Whichever developer comes in, wherever they come in, we know exactly where the water lines go, where the sewer lines go, we've got it all figured out, how to just do the rest of the whole city, everything, including the other side and all the lot. We know where everything's gonna go, it's already designed. Size is already done.
So the piece that Matt was asking me about is the, the city currently doesn't extend it, right? So everybody's been watching this about saying, hey, we understand land plan, we understand these, and so. However, what they're looking at here is, there's an assumption that we're gonna be on the other side and servicing that area. That, that's been a source of some confusion. So I think right now what we've done is we've worked on figuring it out if it does happen. It doesn't mean that it's, it's gonna happen. However, you're still gonna wanna be digging up pipes, you know, if it ends up happening, you know, in the future.
Anybody, any, impact fee advisory committee is a great move, I think there's six or seven people on it, you know, they're doing a great job, and, uh, so, anybody come and listen, anybody come and, and watch them, uh, if you want, see what they're doing? October, I believe is when it's teed up? I think we're teed up to put it in place in October, as a city.
Just got some pictures up there for.
Yeah, I need to get the next meeting on there.
Okay? Very good? Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing on the impact fee.
Motion to close the public hearing on that.
I have a motion? Motion is second, always in favor? Okay, great, alright, so that's going there. Um, next up is business citizens forum, person with business not scheduled, any cards? Does anybody have anything to say? Without a card? Wow, we got two. Joey in the back.
Can, can you give us a, a specific, um, update as far as where we are with land plan? And, um, and if we're in place with something going forward, uh, any timelines that you have, and, that are, that are specific?
I'm not with land plan on, um, Tuesday. We, I know that they're, uh, financial advisors, and we were talking about, um, some financing, uh, options for any infrastructure with them. They are not in any hurry. That's, that's what they do.
One, we're having to sooner rather than later.
Yeah, they're not waiting on us for anything, they are just sitting there being land planned. There was nothing substantive, there's nothing negative, there's nothing different. It's just, they'll start when they decide to start. There's absolutely nothing we can do to make them start sooner, there's nothing we've done to make them start later. There's absolutely nothing that's happened on anything, and, um, you know.
I think the last time was, yeah, they dropped off the voluntary plan on five twelve, or re-approved, I should say, on five twelve. They brought nothing back.
They, they've implied that they could start pretty quickly from the time that they decide to start. Which will be when they decide to start.
Just had a question about, why would you care how they finance this?
Because there, there are tax incentives, there's TIFs, there's PIDs, there's TURs, there's different.
So it's us giving additional money, or is it, is it, they're just trying to look out?
They're trying, there, there are special tax incentives that can only be approved by the city. So, it has nothing, we're not doing anything, we're, it's not nothing with us, it's a special, special tax incentive that only apply on their property, only on that property.
No, there's, it's not a general item.
So, you know, that's kind of what that is. Okay, um, yes, sir.
Great question, I just wanted to add, I'm following any news on that, on High Ridge, do you believe collapse?
Alright, okay, so we have a collapsed sewer on, on High Ridge, um, just outside your front door. The good news is, you're on the, you're on the downside, so you're okay. Everybody in front of you, which is only one house, it's the white house up there on the corner. Don't tell them anything up there in the lottery winner's house, because the sewer line is busted between them and, and the plant, so, um, that sewer line is, is collapsed. So, we're getting a big excavator, and we're gonna come and excavate your front door.
That, that particular line is very deep.
Dirt, deep.
So we're gonna go down in your front yard, we're gonna dig it up, uh, we're gonna save the trees. We'll save the trees, we shouldn't have to dig down the big trees. Um, we'll do everything we can to minimize, but it's deep, falls out, it's pretty deep.
Like you said, it's a big, big front of my house, I don't know where it would be in front of your house.
Now, the good news is, the sewer line is broken, but it's broken like, like this. So it's just one spot that's collapsed, so we don't have to do fifty feet of, no, it'll probably be about eight foot wide. Um, we'll, we'll fix it there. So, in, in the meantime, we're bypassing, you'll see some work in front of your house because we're pumping it out manually.
Yeah, we've noticed.
You know, bypassing, we're doing, it's like being on a Hartland bypass, so we're going around that, this, that, that manhole, to the next manhole up, we're pumping it out manually. But we'll have an excavator go up to the next wing. But it shouldn't affect you at all, although you'll just see a lot of gas in your front door, so.
So the break is south of your driveway?
North.
North.
This side, okay.
So on our side. Shouldn't affect your driveway. If anybody does, you know, we take out the driveway, we put it back. We just put the people back, you know.
Right way side, just like trees.
Okay, we'll, we'll try.
We got lots of glue.
That's a good point, maybe we have Sam put a little fence around the tree or something, just to.
Sam told me today, he probably thinks he can take the trees out and replant them. Like, he won't just chunk them, I mean, he'll actually try and take them out, step them aside if, if they're in the way, and then we'll, we'll put it back. But when we do that repair, your yard's gonna look like crap for a while, because it's got set. You can't smash it down, when you just put in a pipe bit, otherwise you'll just bust it again. So, it's one of those things, it looks out for you for a couple of months.
But they do, you do grass.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll put a mix on it, it grows pretty quick, it's amazing stuff. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, we're working on it.
I guess that would be an awesome time to ask, actually, if they're gonna be digging up the dirt there, are we showing up with rains? We always have a ridiculous amount of rain.
Yeah, Sam is gonna talk to you about some other things. So, when we got a giant excavator over there, he's gonna talk to you.
Awesome, good for you with like.
Yeah, 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 okay.
We'll talk to them.
Okay, yeah, talk to Sam then, yes.
Pretty good.
It's always good to have a giant excavator next to all you. Okay, any other questions? Any other comments? Alright, okay, thank you all, alright, moving on. Okay, next up is the consent agenda, alright, so we have a, um, minutes of the August meeting, and then we have, uh, the, uh, extension of Mark's contract, Patterson, Patterson's doing a great job, awesome. I'm, I'm so happy, I cannot tell you how good an operator he is. The, I made a mistake when I, uh, when we talked about the budget. Mark's, Mark's fee is going to thirty-six hundred a month, but I forgot, part of that's paid by the MBD. It's now thirty-six hundred in the city, so, it really, only. So it really only went up, I, I forgot, so. The city was paying three thousand and fifty, the M D was two hundred, so his contract is thirty-two fifty before. And now it's going up to thirty-six hundred, it's going up a little over ten percent, but it's fixed for three years. It's great. We just got a re-permit from the sewer plant, from the sewer plant, five-year permit, just came in this year. That's a consent agenda. Okay, okay, moving on. Okay? Motion?
I have a motion to reject the consent agenda.
I've motioned to approve the consent agenda? Second to right, always in favor? All right, very good. All right, next up. All right, consideration of the minutes of July fourteenth, uh, two thousand and six, council. Okay, so, um, so the issue we have with this meeting is, this is the first time since I can remember Linda wasn't there. So Linda had, um, an issue that came up, uh, and she couldn't make the meeting. So everybody kind of tried to ad hoc their own minutes. I know I did my version, Clint did his version, and everyone was trying to keep track of who seconded what, and who voted where, and, uh, so everybody kind of took their own, Linda tried to cobble it together. And, you know, like you imagine in the old game where everybody says something, and you go down the line, um. Now we've got some minutes that everybody's trying to edit and put context in. So, uh, I think Clint had a real good idea. Clint, you wanna, you wanna explain it?
Yeah, so we've always kind of, Linda's always been the one that takes the minutes and inscribes them. And then historically, council members would, if, if something wasn't inscribed right, and it's like, we're tight-o, or something was like, no, that's not, not what I said. We never, typically, we didn't get into changing context. But again, this was a special circumstance, and we didn't have anybody in it, it was so sudden, we didn't have anybody to back up. So I think this is probably an, an area where, or this particular instance, where I think, looking forward, you know, we'll probably let Linda do the minutes, like she's continually not. But also just kind of a, a note, the minutes are above and beyond what, what's actually required by the state. And this is, I think in this situation, we probably need to, uh, step back and basically just put the minimum, uh, criteria together for, I, I'm confident that we, we described the minutes correctly as far as who voted on what, the times and now the exact concession of public hearings. But just avoid any kind of conjecture or, you know, misinterpretation of it. For this particular sub-minute, it's just, just who voted on what at what times. And then in the future, we continue on rolling out, let Linda take the minutes. And then hopefully in the future, additionally, we'll have somebody else that maybe can back up, um, kind of the lesson where maybe we can find a citizen or somebody to take the minutes for us.
So. So legally, minutes, most cities take action items. All they show is, motion was made by X, approved by Y, the vote was this to that. They don't put any, they don't do any descrip-, that's all you have to do. Minutes just have to say what happened, who voted for what, who motioned for this. But they're called action, is it action agenda, action?
Action agenda.